Good evening. I called the Planning Commission regular meeting to order. It's 6:30 PM and it is Thursday, November 16th. And we are located here in the City Council chambers at Sammamish City Hall. The next item of business is roll call, so I'll start on my right tonight.
Jane Garrison.
Shannon Collins.
Larry Crandall.
Roshino Farrell.
Okay, so we do have a quorum with four commissioners because there are normally seven of us, but tonight there are only four of us. But that is still a quorum, so any decisions that we make tonight would require the majority of the quorum to pass or fail. So, the next item of business is the approval of the agenda. It's a short agenda tonight, so is there any objection to approving the agenda?
No.
Okay, seeing none, then the agenda is approved. So the next item of business is the approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2017. If there's no, or is there any objection to approving the minutes?
No.
No? Good. Okay, the minutes from November 2nd, 2017 are approved. And the next item of business is public comment. This is the time during the evening that anyone from the public can come to speak on a non-agenda item. So, for example, the agenda item tonight is the 2018 docket. If you want to speak about something other than that, right now is the time. So, Ms. Victor.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I am on non-docket item, but I'm talking about changes to the 2015 comprehensive plan. I have brought up before that I think you guys need an errata sheet, or a hints, or here's what missing sheet. So today I brought the King County Surface Water Design Manual. They have an errata sheet that they started two months after they did their, the manual that we adopted. Washington Department of Ecology also uses an errata sheet for some of their things. Washington State Department of Transportation also uses an errata sheet for theirs. Sometimes they're just small things like date changes or left out references. And on the bottom of the first sheet here, I put the ones that I caught reading the comp plan when I went through it last year and tried to get a tiny map change, which I wasn't able to do. So I've called it City of Sammamish 2015 Comprehensive Plan Omissions, Errors, or Changes As Things Evolved, or you can call it hints. So in Volume 2 of Land Use, LU.5, "The natural environment is missing a legend. The steep slopes are gray, the wetlands are dark green, the parks are light green." And then the data is actually from the community profile from 2013. It would be nice to know that it took a long time to dig that information up. Also, Zaccus Creek, the city changed the spelling from Z-A-C-C-U-S-E to Z-A-C-K-U-S-E. And they also renamed one of the sub-basins, which was North Monahan, to Zaccus Sub Basin. I believe those were done in 2016. And then I also believe the bikes trails pathways plan was renamed to be the non-motorized plan. So those are just a couple of things that if someone were reading the document and they saw that first, they could pop it up and then they wouldn't have to stumble it or wonder what's doing. Councilmember Huckabee, who's been around for a long time, she was actually reading the comp plan for the stormwater changes, so I know people that have been around read it. And we're going to have a whole bunch of new council members come in. You do have to read it, it just makes sense to do. And the reason I'm speaking again is because I was told to. They said if no one's getting back to you, you should keep bringing it up. So you said you were going to get back to me. I heard nothing. Talked with Kelly, she said nothing. And Lyman had liked it the last thing, but I've heard nothing, so there's my suggestion again.
Can you bring him? Thank you, Mary. Thank you. I think having examples is always helpful. Is that all, Mary? Did you want to say anything else? You're good? Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item of business, which is old business. Tonight we will hold a public hearing and conduct deliberations for the 2018 Comprehensive Plan docket applications. So first, staff will give a presentation. Second, commissioners will have a chance to ask questions related to that presentation. Then I will open the public hearing. Everyone here will have a chance to speak. I will close the public hearing. And then someone, one of the commissioners will make a motion, will deliberate on that motion, and then we can amend the main motion, just how we have been doing. And then we will vote. And that should be it. So with that, I will turn it over to staff, and I believe tonight we will hear from David Goodman.
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. As the chair mentioned, I'm going to be going through a similar presentation as I did two weeks ago, but this time we'll discuss at the end our staff recommendations and then turn it back over to the chair to open the public hearing. So as mentioned, the purpose of this evening's meeting is to open and close a public hearing and vote on a recommendation for the 2018 Comprehensive Plan docket, which will be transmitted to the City Council for their consideration. Note of, logistical note, since there's only four commissioners in attendance, we would need at least three commissioners to vote in favor of a particular recommendation for it to be forwarded to the City Council. And if we end up with a 2-2 split, then we'll move forward without a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And as mentioned, tonight is an action night in more ways than one. So just to review, we are in the early stages of the 2017-2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. This is the final stop for the docket review with the Planning Commission. Once the Planning Commission recommends a particular set of proposals to the City Council, it'll move forward to the Council in a couple of weeks on December 4th and 5th. They will set the docket, and then the approved proposals will move on to legislative review and they will all come back to the commission and the council. And just a note, another logistical note, even the, for this particular round, even if the commission does not choose to approve or to recommend certain proposals, those proposals will still move forward to City Council as part of the docket review. However, City Council then sets the docket and those proposals that the council does not approve will not move forward to legislative review. But again, if the commission decides not to approve a certain proposal, that proposal will still have a chance to be heard in front of the City Council on December 4th and 5th. So this is just review from last time, but I thought I'd go through it again quickly. What we're talking about here tonight are amendments to the comprehensive plan. Because the Sammamish plans under the Growth Management Act, we are required to have a comprehensive plan to serve as the centerpiece of local planning. And the GMA, the Growth Management Act specifies this required element, so the particular chapters of that comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan then guides the city's decisions on such things as land use, transportation, housing, capital facilities, parks, the environment, and others. And through those elements, they establish priorities that affect the decisions that the city makes every day in terms of programs and policies and everything like that. So the Growth Management Act requires a thorough update of the comprehensive plan once every eight years. The last one here in Sammamish was in 2015. And so during that time, the whole comprehensive plan essentially gets cracked open and there's a comprehensive discussion about all the different elements of it and how it can be changed to better suit the city's vision for the following eight years. But in between those major updates, the GMA permits the city to consider smaller amendments that go on an annual basis. So that's what we're doing here tonight, is we're considering those annual amendments. So a note about those amendment proposals is the city is essentially only obligated to accept proposals. The city is not obligated to approve any of them. The city is not obligated to do anything except accept them and consider them. Unlike a lot of land use decisions where there are prescribed objective criteria for whether something will be approved or not, with a comprehensive plan amendment, in this particular case, it's an entirely discretionary decision. So there are no set criteria necessarily. There are no rules, there are no thresholds that a particular proposal can cross and mean it means, which means it'll automatically get approved. It's entirely discretionary. So in this particular case, and we'll get to this a little later, staff have developed some criteria that we feel are best for evaluating these proposals and determining whether we think they should advance a legislative review. But those are just ours. The commission and by extension the council can certainly use them, but the commission and council can also decide based on your own criteria. So there are two types of comprehensive plan amendments that we accept during the annual cycle. The first are what we call land use map amendments. The land use map is the long-term vision for land use within the city. And people or groups of people can apply to change the long-term land use designation of their property. This takes place on what we call the future land use map, which is a land use map that's located within the land use element of the comprehensive plan. And changes to this map require a comprehensive plan amendment. Similar but different is the current zoning map, which is simply the present-day implementation of the future land use map. And changes on that map require something called a zone reclassification. So I'm going to try my best to use the proper term. I know a lot of these terms sound very similar, but they do represent different things. So tonight we're simply, we're only talking about the future land use map. And I know you've all seen this a couple times, but I just want to, for the benefit of those in the audience and just for the benefit of review, to illustrate the difference between the future land use map and the current zoning map, I'm going to use an example from the city of Redmond to illustrate how, why these two things are generally different and then show the Sammamish map to illustrate why it's a little different here. So as you can see in the future land use map for the city of Redmond, they have large swaths of land that are designated under these rather broad categories. So you can see on the bottom there, they have single-family constrained, single-family urban, multifamily urban. These are rather nonspecific, and the reason for that is they get more specific on their current zoning map. So as you can see, the big area that is zoned, single-family urban on the left, is a range of zoning design, or range of zoning designations on the right on the current zoning map, anywhere from R4 to R8. So as in the example I've used a couple times, in Redmond, if you are within a single-family urban zone, and let's say hypothetically you have an R4 parcel and you want to change to an R8, in this particular case, you would not need to change the future land use map because that's already covered in your zoning designation. You would only need to do a zone reclassification because that zone change is already covered within your future land use designation. Here in Sammamish, we do it a little differently. Our future land use map is essentially the same as our current zoning map. So let's, unlike in Redmond where you have a range of zoning designations within one future land use designation, here in Sammamish, if you, in this particular case, if you are an R4 and you want to change to an R6, you do have to change the future land use map because our future land use map designations are as specific as our zoning map designations. So what we're doing here tonight is talking about changing the future land use map. However, to actually change the current zoning map, what would have to happen is after the proposal was placed on the docket for next year, a zone reclassification application would need to be completed either concurrently or afterwards for the change to actually take place. So those are future land use, or excuse me, those are land use map amendments. And then slightly less complicated, we have text amendments, which basically are sometimes cosmetic changes to the comprehensive plan. Sometimes there's minor policy changes or changes in the background information about the different elements. So just as a first example, we have in the background element, or background section of the transportation element, a list of concurrency projects. So these are projects that traffic impact fees are eligible to be used for. If the city wanted to change the list of concurrency projects, they would need to do, so if they wouldn't want to add a project or take away a project that would be eligible for those types of fees, they would have to make a text amendment to the comprehensive plan. And the same would go here. This is just an example from the parks element that references the 2012 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And there's a lot of items in the comprehensive plan that flow from this. So if they wanted to change policies, goals, anything like that, that are related to an updated Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, that would also require a text amendment. So before I get into the proposals for this year, Commissioner Garrison had a request last time for us to go a little more in-depth into some of the zoning designations we're talking about. So I wanted to just highlight community business and neighborhood business because we have one proposal that is, wants to change a zoning designation to community business and another that wants to change to neighborhood business. So I wanted to just quickly go through what those two are and why, and what's different about them. So, community business, we have about 60 acres worth of community business zoned land in the city. And that's, those are located in our three commercial centers in Inglewood Plaza, Pine Lake Village, and Klahani. So those are the Safeway Shopping Center to the north, the QFC Shopping Center to the south, and then the Klahani Shopping Center. And generally, these zones, the code definition is a little wordy, but essentially they're areas that are supposed to provide commercial services for a relatively limited area that are larger than just one small neighborhood but are smaller than larger regional centers. So I'd call them kind of mid-size shopping centers that aren't regional destinations but are a little larger than just neighborhood convenience centers. And neighborhood business, we only have one little area of two acres that's zoned neighborhood business. That's Sammamish Lakeside Plaza down by the lake in the southwestern portion of the city. This is small, this is a business area that serves a smaller, is supposed to serve a smaller population area than community business. So it's really supposed to be only serving the relatively limited area around it. So generally speaking, the physical dimensions of these zones are about the same. There's not much, there's not a whole lot of difference in how they would look. The primary difference is in the type of businesses that are allowed to be there. So this is a selection of different business types from our code. So both community business and neighborhood business can have things like food and drugstores, a gas station, a basic office or outpatient clinic, and sort of general office space. But for things that are, you know, things like apparel, so clothing stores, hotels, bowling, in case that ever comes up, and some other higher intensity medical facilities, those are limited to community business zones and not supposed to be in neighborhood business zones. So I would think of community business as a bit more of a, serving a bit more of a, bit of a larger area, and neighborhood business serving a more limited area. And there is also a difference in terms of if you were to do a mixed-use development, so a building that was, for example, commercial on the ground floor and residential on the top floor, is a bit, you can only have a smaller version of that in neighborhood business as opposed to community business, but those are also allowed in both of these zones. So on to the proposals. I'm going to go through all of them again, just briefly, and then at the end I'll discuss what our recommendations are. So we had 11 proposals submitted this year. Six were from the city and five were from private citizens. And of those, six were land use map amendment proposals and five were text amendment proposals. So the first proposal and the first bunch I'll go through here are from the city. This first one is to change the long-term zoning designation of the recreation center properties. So that's the Boys and Girls Club. That's two parcels right at the intersection of 228th Avenue and 8th and Inglewood. The proposal here is to change the long-term zoning from R12 and R18 to community business, like we just discussed. The second is a text amendment proposal related to the upcoming adoption of an updated Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. This would essentially serve, this would essentially allow the city to update the comprehensive plan in whatever way is necessary to become consistent with the new Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan that's scheduled to be adopted in February. Third here are, is an amendment related to school impact fees. So this is essentially a small fix that would change the background section of the capital facilities element to read that it adopts the capital facilities plans that the schools adopt every year by reference. So this, currently what we at the city do is make an amendment to the comprehensive plan every year to reflect the new capital facilities plans. What this change would do would allow us to not have to do that because the text would read that we adopted by reference. So there wouldn't be any need to change it every year. It would just automatically, you know, be updated with whatever new plan the school districts adopt. The fourth proposal is related to the Housing Strategy Plan. As you're aware, the commission and the city council are going through a significant update to the city's housing strategy plan. This amendment would allow the city to amend the comprehensive plan once the housing strategy plan is adopted, so that it again reflects the new policies, goals, statistics that are related to the new housing strategy plan. The fifth proposal is related to the Traffic Impact Fee and 20-Year Capital Improvement Program. Again, this will allow the city to update the comprehensive plan to reflect new projects, new statistics, new methods of determining level of service, that type of thing. The next proposal is different but related. This has, this one has to do with concurrency metrics. Again, this proposal would allow the city to update the comprehensive plan in the case that transportation system concurrency metrics and level of service standards are changed within the next year. This is a discussion that is ongoing with the city council, as you're well aware. So that's it for the city-initiated proposals. The rest of these are citizen-initiated. The first one comes from council member Don Jerrand. The proposal here is to amend the Town Center Plan to remove a six-story height limit within the Town Center A-zone. The next proposal is the Becheston Proposal. This proposes to change the long-term zoning designation of three parcels right near, you're by E-Bright Creek Park, from R1 to R4. This is about seven and a half acres.
Can you stop on this one for just one second?
Sure.
So I'm looking at the figure three when you, I think it's, it's existing zoning.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it makes it look like that development right above those two parcels is R1, but that doesn't look like it's been developed, R1.
It is R1. I think that's a result of clustering homes, so it was, I believe it was just a larger area, the remainder of which is open space, and so the homes were, are kind of...
Oh, I see. So it could have gone that way.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Proposal number nine is the Syle Proposal. This proposes to change the long-term zoning designation of one parcel near Beaver Lake Park from R4 to neighborhood business. Number 10 is the Saint Tony Proposal. This is to change the long-term zoning designation of one nearly two and a half acre parcel from Town Center E-zone to Town Center A-zone. And just briefly to go over what those two zoning designations entail, Town Center A-zone is meant to be the core area and mixed-use centers of the town center. There's essentially a minimum density of 16 units per acre. You can get up to 40 units per acre through various incentive programs. There are primarily, townhomes and apartments are allowed in the A-zone. A-zone also serves as a transfer of development rights receiving site and should also include some business and retail services. And currently we have about 64 acres of A-zone over 33 parcels in the town center. Town Center E-zone, did you have, sorry, did you have a question?
My only question, in the A-zone, there's TCA 1, 2, 3. What does that designation mean?
Do you want to take that one? I'll pass it over to our Town Center Planner for that one.
Sure. The, the sub-zones, the A1, A2, A3, A4, and A5, as you've indicated, are breakdowns of the larger A designation, as David has put on the slide up there. And they basically relate to the amount of commercial square footage that is allocated to those areas, kind of the high-level answer to that question. These are meant to be mixed-use, commercial, residential, walkable areas. And as such, the commercial square footage that is allowed in Town Center has been broken down and allocated. So generally speaking, the A1 is going to have the highest intensity and the A5 is going to have the lowest intensity of the...
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. So in contrast, the E-zone, which is about 13 acres over six parcels on the, on the lower right of the Town Center area, is labeled as a reserve zone. This is just one unit per acre and only single detached homes are allowed here with no business or retail services. So our last proposal is the Imperatory Proposal. This is to change the long-term designation of five parcels in the northeastern portion of the city from R1 to R4. And this is about almost 21 and a half acres.
And do we know on the Saint Tony property, are they, do they, what TCA, what sub-zone are they looking at? Was that...
The proposal wasn't...
Designated?
The proposal wasn't specific. It just...
Just A?
Yes.
Okay.
The likely scenario would be that it would be, can you go down to the next slide? A3, which would be consistent with the neighboring property on the north. That's, that's, but it's something that commission could talk about and can consider as part of this deliberation.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll go through our recommendations relatively briefly, but if you have any more specific questions about why we came to the recommendation that we did, we'd be happy to, to respond. So as I mentioned earlier, there's no mandated from the, either from the state or the city, there are no mandated criteria for how we decide whether we should docket a proposal. This is, these three criteria that I'll list in a moment are, again, what we as staff felt were most appropriate and were most in line with how we felt this decision should be made. But again, you're not, neither the commission or the council are obligated to use those criteria, but this is just our best judgment. So the first, the first piece that we looked at is whether the proposal is related to an item that's already established on the city's work plan for the remainder of this year and for next year. The second is whether the proposal is related to an item that has already been budgeted for, again, the remainder of this year or next year, as well as whether we felt that there was sufficient staff availability given the established work plan and the established budget to complete a full review of a proposal in 2018. And finally, what we call ripeness. So this is just our, our best sense of whether the proposal is consistent with the city's current policy and programmatic priorities. So this was essentially, we thought, well, is this a proposal that fits with what the city is going to be spending its time doing in the next year? How does it relate to other items that might, might affect it? Is there anything else going on that we think either would, that a proposal would support or that a proposal would take away our time from? So that's, these are the three, the three ways that we analyzed the proposals to come to our recommendation. So apologies for all the text and the big table, but this is our recommendation. We are recommending that proposals 1 through 6 move forward to legislative review next year, and we do not recommend proposals 7 through 11. I can provide a brief, brief explanation for this. For the, for items 2 through 6, these are things that are mostly on the city's work plan already, that the city, that is either already in process. So for example, the Housing Strategy Plan and the Pro Plan are plans that are already in process and will require comprehensive plan amendments next year. Some, and the others are essentially placeholders for things that the city is currently in discussion about. So for example, number five, or excuse me, number 6, this is just an, on the concurrency metrics and level of service standards related to the city's transportation system is currently under discussion. And if significant changes are going to be made to those, they will require a comprehensive plan amendment. So it's not guaranteed for that one. If, it's not guaranteed that changes will be made, but in the case that the changes will be made, we would want to update the comprehensive plan in a timely manner rather than wait until the following year, 2019. In terms of... In terms of Numbers 7 through 11, we have varying, slightly varying justifications for these. Generally speaking, given that the city has capacity to meet its Growth Management Act mandated targets for population, we did not feel that it was the right time to be upzoning properties, especially with the ongoing discussion about the city's land use patterns and similar topics. So we did not feel that that was particularly ripe currently. And for Proposal 9, we felt like this, changing that particular parcel to Neighborhood Business would run up against a couple issues with some of our comprehensive plan policies related to neighborhood continuity and location of commercial zones. So we felt that that one would not pass muster with some of our comprehensive plan proposals. And for the two Town Center proposals, while we did feel that there was, you know, some merit in what they were proposing, given that not only are we currently in a building moratorium, but that the Town Center has not developed to a significant extent quite yet, we felt that it was a little too early to be making changes to the zoning map and to some of the height restrictions in Town Center Zone A. We felt like these, while these are good, you know, these could be good ideas, we felt like Town Center should be a little further developed before we begin making and discussing changes like this. So are there any questions on any of our staff recommendations?
I had a quick one. We're going to eventually be looking at the vision, the future vision of growth in the city of Sammamish. And I want to go back to the community business. Don't bring the slide up, but you had the three shopping centers that we're familiar with, plus the new little one that's starting down on the lake and been pretty successful. Hopefully, if there was somebody from outside the city looking at this tonight, there would be a circle around the Town Center. I know it has its own plans, its own many documents, but it's just, if we're going to track people, the Town Center does have businesses in it, and probably will have more. So I just, it's just a feel-good, what's the city going to look like? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I had one more.
Go ahead.
One at a time. I'll sit back.
No, you go ahead, Larry. Let me think a minute.
Okay. The only way to follow that is on a positive, I did put some thought into this. Okay. No, but tonight, a question, when I saw the neighborhood versus community business, I'm going to give a plug without naming. There's a church tomorrow that's going to have an open house for the respite, if that's the correct way to say it, for caregivers, for people with dementia, menre, or Alzheimer type of things. It's down 228th. And I assume that they're going to charge for you spending from three days a week from 2 to, I mean, excuse me, 10 to 2:30, I think were the hours. And they're going to open up the 25th for caregivers and the people they're giving care to come. Does that, how does that work in? I know it's on a church property, but it just came up to me as I was thinking about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Crandall. Can I just clarify? I think I may know what you're talking about, but I'd like you to clarify. Are you speaking of temporary use, temporary use facilities?
I guess it would be temporary use because they, it's, the name of the group is the East Side Caregivers or something, but they have other locations, and they're finally coming up to offer this kind of respite for the caregivers on the plateau. Okay. Sorry, I got off, but I just, it just came to me.
Okay. I'm not sure I have an answer. Yeah, I'm not sure I have an answer to that, so I apologize, but we can maybe address it at another meeting or talk after the meeting if that is helpful.
I guess my question at this point, are we going to get an opportunity now to speak to each one of these things later, after the public hearing?
That's what I was thinking. I want to ask any questions you have of staff now, and then we'll open the public hearing and close it. And then I was thinking we would go through each one, you know, as a group, and sort of debate the merits of each one.
Well, then, I guess I have a question of staff. Does the GMA, meeting the GMA, you used that as a reason to deny a couple of these, that you say that we don't need any more housing units to meet the GMA? Does that, is that fit in your, into your ripeness category?
I would say it does, but just want to clarify on the point. So when I say that meets our GMA requirements, essentially, the GMA requires, at the county level, for each city to, essentially, the county derives a population growth target for the entire county, and then working with the cities assigns each city a particular growth target for population. So Seattle, you know, Seattle will get a fairly significant number of the total expected growth in King County. Bellevue will get a slightly smaller number, and then Sammamish is relatively way down on the bottom. Ours is about, I think, 4,600 units.
4,640.
4,640 units. So when I say that, what I mean is that, given the city's current zoning, we have enough capacity to meet that growth target that has been assigned to us by King County.
Thank you.
My question is about the community business on Proposal Number 1.
Yes.
And what is the background and why, I mean, why is, I suppose, why is the recreation center sitting on the residential property?
Yes, thank you. I meant to...
And then, and then why not turn it into something like government-related, something how City Hall, I'm assuming, sits on some sort of government-business-type zone? I don't know. Maybe you could talk about that a little bit.
Sure. So the city does not have Civic Zone or anything like that, so we only have residential and commercial.
Okay.
The building, so the recreation center building, I only have a relatively short institutional memory here, so if you have any more questions, I think Kelly might be able to give you a bit more history. But it used to be a King County library, and then the city bought the building, helped renovate it, and then currently leases it to the Boys and Girls Club. As for why that particular building is on a residentially-zoned property, I don't have a great answer besides that certain residential zones are allowed to be used in the way that it's currently being used. So many churches also, for example, sit on residentially-zoned properties. We just, we don't have an institutional zone. But in this particular case, because the property is surround, is within the Inglewood Commercial Zone, and because we don't foresee that it's going to be used as a residential property anytime in the future, we felt that changing it to community business would be more appropriate and would match up a little better with the current and probably future use of the property.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I have one more other question, and I'm not sure how to frame it. So with the property that's requesting to be upgraded from TCE to TCA, you know, it's such a small piece of property, and I guess I want to know why, why we wouldn't want to do that, seeing that we're trying to promote the Town Center and trying to, you know, make it walkable, you know, have all these things and have it be continuous. You know, when you look at the map, it just looks like it could be an easy fix. So, but there, I'm sure there's lots of reasons why it's not an easy fix, and I want to know a little bit more about why or why not we should rezone one particular property, and sort of what are the legal implications of that? And how many other TCE properties are there in the Town Center? I guess I just want to, I want to know a little bit more about this proposal in that respect.
Sure. I'm going to take a swing at it, and David can add if I've missed anything. So the idea of looking at a single parcel, so to answer one of your questions, there are six parcels in the E-zone, one of which is the Lutheran Church, which is kitty-corner to the intersection right here, exiting City Hall. So there are benefits to looking at a zoning designation change, such as what is proposed, more comprehensively with all of the zone, the zoning designations that are contiguous of the same designation. So in this case, it's, the city is not saying that this is not a good idea. I think it's definitely worthy of conversation. I think the point that is being made is that the staff time and effort needed to comprehensively look at that and look at more broadly the Town Center and how this all fits together is, it's not necessarily the right time at this moment. The other contributing factor is the Town Center Plan and subsequently the EIS that was done for the Town Center Plan and the Town Center Regulations does contemplate a certain unit cap, a dwelling unit cap, and that is at 2,000 units with an additional 600,000 square feet of commercial space. So that was all analyzed under the environmental review for that subarea plan. And so this is, this is part of a larger framework in the Town Center that we need to look at more deliberately and comprehensively, and take the time to make sure that we do it right for the whole Town Center. So I think that hopefully that kind of hits...
So potentially, that parcel could create such a development that would exceed the development targets, the traffic, the environmental impact, all of those things?
It would likely trigger additional environmental review, yes. I think the scope of that would need to be determined at the point that we have, if it were to make it to the docket, at the point that there is a real legislative review going on.
Okay. Thank you. That answers most of what I need.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? No? Okay. All right. So I think, oh, sorry, David.
So just briefly, didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
That's okay.
So as mentioned, tonight is our public hearing recommendation, and just a reminder that we would need three, at least three votes, to move a recommendation forward to the city council on December 4th and 5th.
Okay. Well, with no further ado, I will open the public hearing, and the first person, oh, open, the public hearing is now open. The first person on the list is Maureen Santoni, and the next person on the list will be Frank Santoni. So just remember, when you address the commission, to state your name and address.
My name is Maureen Santoni. I live at 22828 Southeast 6 Place, across the road. The reason I'm here tonight is because we are requesting the change of zoning from TCE to TCA. It's docket proposal number 10. We've lived in Sammamish since 1979, 38 years. The first two years in Pine Like Estates, the area was very rural, just a small saddler store, lots of horses, two-lane roads, and no signals. This is the house we built in 1981. We designed it, and it is just across the street, as I said, between the Lutheran Church and the new Ichijo development. For 36 years, it has been quiet and private. The house sits back about an acre from 228th. A lot of people aren't even aware it's there. The lots along this stretch of 228th are long and narrow. We had no idea for many years we would be in the middle of a Town Center. Now, I'll go with picture 2. This is the view to the south of our lot right now and what it has been like for 36 years. The Lutheran Church is on the other side of all those trees. We had a similar view to the north. There was a one-single-story house, probably built in the 1940s. You couldn't see it. There were lots of trees, and early on, there were actually cows in the back portion of the property. When Sammamish began discussing the Town Center Plan, we went to most of the meetings. We attended charrettes, and we went on a bus tour of the other Town Centers. We wanted to find a way for us to remain. It was very clear there were those who wanted to stay and others who wanted to develop their land. The eventual compromise put a TCA 3 zoning next to us, and this has resulted in the development of 75 townhouses 20 feet from our property. The city made the decision to allow this dense housing right next to us. This picture was taken from our porch this summer. In the planning, we asked for 50-foot buffers. People told us we should actually ask for 100-foot buffers. We actually got 20. I misunderstood then what buffers were. This picture was taken just two weeks ago. I thought a buffer was a greenbelt, dense trees to block a view. In reality, it is from the property line to the building. And the cement patio pad they just put in two days ago for these units along there are about eight feet wide, so the, and they go into the 20 feet, so it's actually 12 feet from these cement patios to our property line or the fence. They are planting bushes and low trees right there now in the back area, and they don't even come up to the height of the fence, so it hasn't changed any of that. We've been inside these units, and this is their view. It is not their backyard you see at all, but everything about our house. It's like living in a fishbowl. Their living rooms look out on the main level, and above that are the master bedrooms, and what they see is our house, when our cars are there, when we come out of the house, when we garden. We're nervous even having, even leaving for a few days. We've had someone move our cars, so it looks like there's activity at the house. We can't stay. We love our house. We looked into having it moved, but that was not possible, so we got out the 36-year-old roll of plans. Sammamish's home, we found a lot, which was not easy to do, about a mile away, and are going to rebuild it. Rebuilding is very expensive. We are retired. We know what property along 228th has sold for, and we would like to get the value out of our land since we are being forced to move. Just earlier this afternoon, we got this letter from Scott Hamilton in, by email. He was on the planning commission when all this zoning took place, and he, you have it in front of you, but I will read it. It says, "Dear Commissioners, I submit this letter at the request of Frank and Maureen Santoni, applicants for docket request number 10. I am puzzled at the staff's recommendation to not place the Santoni rezone from TCE to TCA on the docket, with the rationale that this be considered at some future ambiguous date for Town Center review. The Santoni rezone request is nothing more than a technical rezone. My previously submitted letter about the history of how TCE came about provided the context for this letter. The Santoni request should be reviewed as nothing more than a technical correction, if you will, to an existing plan. There is no impact to traffic. This was evaluated in the overall environmental impact study of the Town Center. There is no upzoning. The land use for this parcel and the others with the TCE was evaluated in the EIS and contemplated in the Town Center subarea plan. The intent of the TCE was always to recast to TCA when the time came for the property owners to request a change. As noted previously, TCE was intended only to prevent a massive tax assessment to the highest and best use, TCA, of this transitional property. Staff's assertion that this is not in the work plan and budget staff availability is perplexing at best. The work required is to alter some words and create a new map. If there isn't a budget or staff availability for this, then there is a much larger problem with staffing. The Santonies are not planning to submit a permit for development, thus there is no time to demand of staff to analyze such. Furthermore, the moratorium precludes any permit application for the foreseeable future. The rezone request is, as noted, a technical adjustment. I have no idea what ripeness means, but that was explained just earlier. Holding until future time, staff recommends considering it in the context of a Town Center Plan update in the future. There is no future date established. This could be years of ambiguity. Very simply, there is no impact whatsoever to this technical adjustment." My husband will come up now and use his time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So I don't get two minutes of free time? So Frank Santoni, 22828 Southeast 6 Place, and I'm going to go on further from what Maureen said, to talk a little bit about what ZONE is. So you've seen our proposal, and we think it's for the greater good of the city and for the owners to do what we're asking. ZONE, as you've seen several times now, sits right next to Zone A3, and it's in the Town Center. Our lot borders directly on 228th Avenue to the west and is adjacent to both TCA 3 and TCB zones. Had we not decided to stay where we're living, we're sure we would have been zoned TCA 3 when the zoning was done for the Town Center. You've seen a chart similar to this. This is actually out of the comm plan... This is actually out of the comp plan, where it shows that maximum density in TCA is 40 dwellings per acre, and in ours is one dwelling unit per acre. So what was the purpose of TCE? In June, on June 3rd, 2008, the city council defined TCE as a designation intended to allow current land users to remain while preserving the opportunity for future development. Spelled out very nicely by Scott Hamilton that Maureen just read. And the designation could only be changed through future amendment to the comp plan, which is a very arduous process. It's almost a two-year process. This also became part of the, this is just a repeat of what I just said, it became part of the municipal code. The municipal code states almost identical wording that the purpose of the reserved TCE zone is to allow current uses, uses to remain while preserving the opportunity for future development. The city wanted our property to be higher zoned, and in a compromised move, decided to recreate TCE zone with the understanding that it would be actualized to the higher and desired densities when the residents were, were ready. We asked Scott Hamilton to write a letter previous to this, and which I've shown, showing up here. And we talked to Scott, and he definitely thinks the rezone is just a performa. It should happen, and it should be allowed to happen. The TCE was only in place to help residents with taxes. And part of the original letter, if you look at the bottom paragraph, he kind of, Scott kind of goes to why, why this TCE happened. And he says here, "It was always envisioned that when the property owners requested a rezone from TC, ZONE E, to conform with the surrounding zoning, approval would be forthcoming. The impacts were viewed to be minimal, given the size of the properties, and there was room in the environmental impact statement done at the time for these small upzonings." There was never really any intent by the city to leave this property at one unit per acre for the future, as this density does not in any way reflect the ultimate plan for the town center. Now, we know there's a lot of pressure on the city to evaluate traffic with regards to growth, but the town center's impact with studies extensively already, and the final environmental impact study was done with, on this area, and it still holds. I've given you a copy of the director's code interpretation of the environmental impact study. That's two pages that I gave you. It actually addresses growth up to 2,000 units in the town center, of which only 326 have been approved for construction at this time. And there are no other projects actually in the, in the pipeline to be considered. So our small piece of property wouldn't add a lot to the two, towards the 2,000 units. The final impact statement is good until the town center has more than 2,000 residential units, and this is estimated to probably happen in the year 2030. Our proposal will not trigger any new SEPA review. If you look at, if you, this is a, when I'm showing you up there, this is actually a zoning map from the final environmental impact statement in October of, 2nd of 2007, and this is what the EIS was based on. This is proposed zoning in the town center. Where TCE is right now is actually labeled B, a B-zone there, and the environmental impact study was done based on our property being zoned B. So there's no new environmental impact that has to be done, because it's already been We are, what we are not are developers. Our application is not for development, but only for actualization of the TCE zone. A relatively small parcel could easily be accommodated within GME targets. With proper zoning, this property could be used for senior housing, affordable housing, and any other number of uses the city is interested in pursuing. Sammamish needs urban density in the, in the urban core town center to generate transit service to the, to the southeast of our park and rides, to the north and southeast Redman Light Rail Station, which is opening in 2024. Our property are, is a five-minute walk to Metropolitan Market, a 10-minute walk to Trader Joe's and Safeway, and five minutes to Eastlake High School and Eastside Catholic. It's a walkable piece of property, and it fits in with the plan. Without the proper zoning, though, none of this conversation can even happen. Developer, people aren't interested. We need to get, we need to get on with, along with our lives, and we cannot realize the zoning, and if we can't realize a zoning change as we understood, we, we expected, we will not be able to sell our house without some real loss in value. Because the attractiveness of a single-family resident moving into our property is not there, just the reason why we're moving. Developers have told us that they are very interested, but the zoning has to be correct. There's planning happening now for the adjacent properties, and our property should be in the mix to make the town center a more cohesive and well-thought-out design. If it's not in the mix, it won't be part of the master plan, and it should be. So in conclusion, we think this, our amendment is in the best interest of all involved. It allows the city to develop the town center as it was envisioned. It allows us as the property owners to realize the value of their land and to relocate elsewhere in the city, and we urge the commissioner to recommend this be put on the docket to allow the actualization of this zoning to happen as it was always planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Okay. The next person to speak on this is Jim Ba-chesta? Ba-chesta.
My name is Jim Ba-chesta. I live at 1207 212th Avenue Southeast. I'm here with my wife, Robin, and Mary Romeo, and her daughter, Ann, and I'm representing all of us. So we're requesting a rezone from R1 to R4. And the reason that we put in the paperwork and the reason that it was denied, as you know, is given that the city of Sammamish currently has the capacity to meet the population growth targets, staff does not recommend placing the proposal on the 2018, 18 docket. I recommend that the, the planning commission change that position for the following reasons. The population growth target, I think, is the wrong metric. The growth target is really inventory. And the city, what you're saying is the city has sufficient inventory to build, but that's a 20-year plan. We're asking to increase the inventory, basically, but it's not gonna, that's not how you control the appropriate use of, of a property. Our property, I think, is improperly zoned. It's not gonna be the best and most useful purpose for that property, and, and inventory is not, is not a good measure. I would argue that the right measure is the permitting process to control growth, the proper growth in the right areas, the amount of growth. The moratorium is proof that that's how the city does it, and if the growth management targets was, or the inventory target was the, the right approach, the city would not, would, would respond to the moratorium by decreasing inventory, which would be foolish. So, so it's the wrong metric, and I believe you have the right, the right tools today. The zoning that we have today, which is R1, is legacy. It was done when the city was, before the city was incorporated, when the city was rural. It's simply an inherited zoning. I, I could find no proof as to why it was, it was not changed. The, Ms. Collins noticed that the property looks like R4. In effect, we live in an R4 neighborhood today, but it's, it's zoned R1 because of the clustering. So, so it's inherited, and I believe is incorrect, especially when you go through that neighborhood, especially for the proximity that, that exists to the, to the city core. And I would also argue that the unintended consequences of R1, there's, it's two-sided as far as diversity. The city has a goal to have economic diversity. In fact, the studies are, we are over, we have oversupply of high-end properties, and we don't have enough affordable properties. So the R1 zoning definitely will, will encourage building. I mean, we live on properties that, when it is built, very, is, is gonna serve the over-served demographic of high-end properties. R4 would make more affordable housing, and, and I think it's a more appropriate use for that property. Bottom line, for, for a city that's environmentally focused, R1 zoning in a rural area is, is wasteful. It wastes, it wastes resources by consuming valuable land in inappropriate ways. It also uses infrastructure such as sewer, water, roads in a very ineffective way. R1 zoning, in my view, really doesn't, it doesn't have a good purpose unless there's environmentally sensitive areas, but, but we're in a rural zone. And the other thing is, R4 zoning will enable us more opportunity to remain on the property. The Romeos and my wife and I, we appreciate open space. We appreciate the community, and in fact, we were instrumental in Ebright Creek Park. We own that parcel. We worked for over a year with the city to make sure that that land was not, did not go to developers, it went to the park. So, so that is something that, that we value greatly. We, we, Mary has cows on her property today. I have a hobby farm. We donate all the proceeds to food banks and to friends. The R4 zoning would give us the opportunity to use the transfer of development rights to remain on the property and, and to use a free-market environment so that we can continue to have open spaces. And the advantage of, of using the transfer of development rights is that's a long-term impact for the, for the, the entire future of that property to be open space, but, but allows us to make that decision, which I would argue is, it should be our decision. So I recommend that you change the docket, the, the decision to go from what you have today and, and to get it on the docket. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right. The next person is Robin Ba-chesta. You don't want to speak? Okay. The next person would be Ann Romero. Same thing? Okay. Okay. And Mary Romero, same thing? Okay. The next person to speak is John Metcalf.
My name is not John Metcalf. He was here and had to get called away suddenly, unfortunately. So I'm speaking for him and for Kermit Reinhardt, who is another of the four landowners on item 11 that was not recommended by staff.
Sir, excuse me. Could you please state your name?
My name is Mel Malkoff, and I'm representing a couple of, I'm speaking for a couple of the owners in the 2800 block of 244th. It is item number 11 on the docket.
I also need you to state your address.
24653 Hill Bend Lane in Kingston, Washington.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We are very dismayed to be back here again. And this year, unlike last year, we have a recommendation to be left off the docket. Last year, this same body recommended our inclusion and forwarding to the council unanimously. We have four landowners who've gotten together in approximately 23 acres. We were all zoned R4 in the county. The city formed, annexed the land, downzoned our property, and we didn't have adequate notice. In fact, we didn't have any notice of that. So last year, we retained a consultant. She submitted a package in a timely fashion, and staff had last year said, "Yeah, we have the time and the manpower and the budget to work on this, this year." And all of a sudden, we've again submitted the package, and this time, we didn't even get to first base on a staff recommendation. So we're rather dismayed. All of the owners represent the properties as an retirement and investment, you know? We're all tenants there, and this is correcting a downzone that happened when we were annexed into the city. So we are asking you to again forward us onto the city council and to change the staff recommendation from not recommended to recommended for inclusion and vote that way. We would very much appreciate that. We think that this is an opportunity to correct a downzoning that happened some 20 years ago, and to provide a greater opportunity to create at R4 more affordable housing. We have interest from a number of developers on our properties, and it makes good land use planning to do 20, well, staff said 21, we have about 23 acres, being master-planned all together at a density that allows for the inclusion of major infrastructure, which as individual owners on an R1 lot, we certainly couldn't afford to sewer or do other capacities. So you'll hear from a couple of the other owners. I just want to thank you on behalf of John and Kermit, and ask you to please reconsider our docket, item number 11, for inclusion this year and to be moved forward. It is past ripe. One might say, "We're feeling a little rotten about this right now." But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Next person to speak is Michael Seals? Or Sees? I'm not sure.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have a soft voice. Anyway, my name is Michael Seals. I live at 2880 244th Avenue Northeast. Have lived there for 30-something years there, yeah. And to follow up with Mr. Malkoff's enviable speech, I think that ripe is, ripe is the right word. And I think, as, as just a little kernel of information, that the staff has not taken into account the fact that this one-acre zoning, or R1, will not support the infrastructure that is needed there, even if it's our, even if there's only one there. It's, there's not enough there to do it. And I did some rummaging around in the city review papers, and I found a, an article, I think it was February 2002, where the county pled with the city, or pleaded with the city, to raise it to R4 so that the proper infrastructure could be put in this property, in this place. That means it's obviously a tough spot for roads, sewers, and et cetera, et cetera. The Broadmoor Estates there has been on sewers for 25-plus years. One of these days, they're gonna have to have sewers, and...
They're on septic.
Oh, they're on septic. I'm sorry.
You meant...
Yeah. Yeah, 10,000 square foot lot. Anyway, so for that very reason only, since it won't support the infrastructure that's required to do the proper job of putting infrastructure there, it should be raised to R4. And I would plead with you to make sure that we get put on the docket as recommended. Nothing's changed, so all of a sudden, it's unanimously voted in, and now it's not even recommended to be on the docket or moved up. So I would appreciate it very much if that could happen. Like you said, we're getting old. It's my retirement. I've worked for a half my life to get this done, and I've learned by the rules and the rules have nothing but stepped on me. So I will leave the rest of my time to, to the other speakers. There's two other. Probably Julie Imperatori will, will take my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Julie Imperatori is the next speaker.
I think I do, but I'll have to switch it up. Besides, I can't count. Most of what's in that rhetoric that I gave you was from last time. We were approved unanimously by this committee. In fact, everybody was here at that time. And nothing has changed. But then I get down to the newspaper story, which is in that packet, which was put forth by Ron Sims and Karen Wolf, who are no friends of developers. But it's very well laid out on why the property should be zoned R4. The staff does not recommend approval, and I want to know why. Why is the exact proposal that was recommended last year, and it gives the opportunity to plan for roads off the plateau, which is certainly an acute problem? No private individuals or taxpayers were recommended to go forward. They were only the public ones, which I guess, I seem terribly unfair. There are no private dockets that have been recommended to go forward. Ripeness, we'll get to that in a minute. But planning ahead is really, really important. And I can use two real good examples, where the city of Issaquah is in a world of hurt because they emotionally reacted to certain things. Newport Way, which is in that packet, was on a CPI back 20, 25 years ago to be widened so you could go from north-south, it's not exactly north-south, but you'd get to the Hobart Road without going through Front and Sunset, which is the mess. And then, in the infinite wisdom of the council, they turned down the south bypass, which would go down, southeast of Issaquah down to about Sycamore, and bypass this great huge mess they have in traffic. And I'll tell you, Fred Butler, who worked against this bypass vehemently, said he'd give us eye teeth to have that bypassed down. And so, you know, mistakes are made, but most of the problem is you have to look forward. And a little bit more forward than next year, or even five years, because if you get an opportunity, you need to take it. It may not be there later. And then I have this ripeness thing. How does the staff decide what's ripe and what's not? Really, the economy decides what's ripe and what's not. All of this is driven by the economy. We have a very good economy, we have a very good workforce. Fortunately, they're going to afford expensive houses, which is up here. But the reason they're so expensive is because it's so hard to get anything done. Before you actually turn a spade of dirt on a lot, they're worth $250,000. And then everybody blithely talks about affordable housing. People can't even afford a lot up here, much less put a house on it. So I guess I'm at a real loss on why we didn't get recommended this year, where we did last year. The staff isn't doing any or recommending any private proponents for the docket. What are they going to be doing that they're so busy? Last year, they approved everyone. Of course, it didn't get anywhere, but that was due to the city council. But if you approved it unanimously last year, why wouldn't you reapprove it this year? I mean, it's not under the moratorium, it's not under, you know, any problem that's going at the time, because when you go to develop it, you have to deal with all the things that are running through your mind. You know, too much traffic, and building the road. The road you will be able to get out of the developer. The developer will be required to do half a road on the east side, because that's where the property is, and they have to put in, you know, sewer, water. But it's financially infeasible to do on a R4, R1 zoning, because we've done a feasibility study. And we know what can go there and what people will pay for there and things like that. And for basically economic decisions, I don't really think the staff should be making them. And this ripeness thing, I've heard that before, but not very often. So I'd like you to read that article that came out in 2002.
I don't see it, Julie.
It's in here. It's the one where, this all was in King County. And they wanted, they wanted to get it R4 to R1. And actually, the small part of it is on one side, then you got big parts on, you know, carry over to the next page, because that's the way it appeared in the newspaper. But that was 15 years ago that the planning staff at King County felt that this should be R4. So I would ask you to vote yes again, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item tonight? Okay. Please.
My name is Stark Shelby. I live at 2856 244th Avenue Northeast. I am one of the owners of the group that has just spoken here. And the article is really good, and I certainly hope everyone, including the staff, reads this article, because 15 years ago, one of the people that was the biggest proponent for no growth recommended that they go along with what King County suggested. And the very frustration with our problem is, we're not asking for new zoning that we didn't have. Most of us had the zoning when we purchased the property, it was R4. And then the Growth Management Act came in '86, and things get confused, and here we are, a lot of us 35 years later, and we're still, can't even, you know, get in front of anybody to make a decision. And the thing that boggles my mind is the R4 zoning is the zoning that can handle, I mean, everyone's saying, well, we can't, we have a moratorium because people can't get anywhere. Well, they can't get anywhere because the roads aren't worth a darn. They're not worth a darn because the city doesn't allow the proper zoning to have a developer pay for the road. I mean, our group is the solution. I just don't, it boggles my mind why we're having so much trouble with the city. This should be a partnership, not a, you know, a back-and-forth antagonistic thing. It only makes sense, and you read that article, it was 15 years ago, King County wanted to do it R4, and at that time, their lots were not in the city of Sammamish, you had not annexed it yet. And so supposedly, there was all these emails that went back and forth, and people, oh, we don't want any more growth. And so, a few people that were good salespeople argued with King County, and King County said, okay, well, we won't do it. And that, there was a lot of properties involved in that particular decision. So everyone is really very upset and very concerned and very, you know, dumbfounded, like, say, how did we go from unanimous last year to not on the docket this year? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mark Baughman, 1811, 221st Place Northeast. I just suggest that the commission ask the staff a few more probing questions about a couple of these. The Santoni property in particular, the reasons that I heard didn't seem particularly valid to me, why they didn't suggest moving that one forward. It fits within the city's eventual plan for the town center, so that reason doesn't seem very valid to me. It also doesn't really preclude any, I'm sorry, the other part of it is that the suggestion was that the town center is not moving very fast and the moratorium is in place. Well, that fails to recognize and acknowledge the long run-up that it takes from the point in which you change the designation of a property like this or a parcel until the point where something actually happens with it. And it also fails to recognize all the things that are actually going on right now with the town center. So I think that those reasons are not good justification, and it's worth asking a few more questions to make sure that that's the right decision. If the reason is that there's not enough staff time, that could be a valid reason, and that may be worth considering. But the other reasons don't seem very valid to me. The other one that I'd suggest you ask a few more questions about is Don Jaren's recommendation. I don't have the code or the comp plan in front of me at the moment. What I do know is that more typically, there was a suggestion that we're not talking about height restrictions at this point. Well, six stories would not be a way for most municipalities to control the height of buildings that are built, for lots of different reasons. It doesn't make any sense. When you want to control height, and I believe actually that the code already says this, so I think removing the six-story limit wouldn't change any heights. The height is designated in feet and inches. That's how it's done, and there's calculations. So if you build a building on a hill, you have to do a calculation for the roof height on this side and on this side. Stories don't mean very much. Stories, which isn't even really a technical term, it should be floors. Floors on a hospital can be 19 feet floor-to-floor. Floors on a concrete structure hotel could be nine-foot-six floor-to-floor. So stories is kind of an inappropriate way to manage anything, and certainly not the way to manage height of buildings. So it may be appropriate, to me, I would consider this one to be more of a language change than anything else, because you would never want to try to control height of buildings with stories. It should be done in feet and inches. So both of those, I think, are worth asking a few more questions to make sure that the reasons provided for not moving those forward are valid, and, you know, the recommendation of the council will make sense to them as well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comment. Yes?
And hi, planning commissioners and city staff and everyone. Some of them are my neighbors. My name is Audrey Green. I live in 2217 244th Avenue Northeast. So I've been living in Sammamish for 13 years, and certainly not as long as many of you here. And I think this is my first attendance for a public hearing, actually, from the city. And also because some of the recent, of course, development activity is happening on our street. And so I'm here, I'm probably not going to address specific items here, but I just wanted to maybe give a few comments in terms of what I feel, you know, these discussions and issues and different perspectives. So I thought that in terms of the comprehensive plan, I would love to hear more about city's plan on building the infrastructure, right? The public water, public sewer. We call that public, but I think according to my understanding right now, a lot of these public infrastructure and now only can be built by developers. And I think that's no longer a public concept. And I kind of hope that the city can work with the Sammamish water and sewer, because this could be, very well be, part of the solution that facing many of the city's issues right now. Because I feel that right now, for people who are either forced to sell their property, especially if they have acres, all they are planning to sell their property, and they love to sell to the developers, because the market, you know, we all understand that. But for the people who are living right now in the city, and they don't have the plan to sell anytime soon, and they really hate the developers, because one developer had so much power in controlling all this public infrastructure building, and the city gave them a lot of the way to do that, and they tend to not to think too much about the residents. So they build the houses very close to the border, they don't give the buffers, and they cut so many trees, which, you know, for me, 13 years ago, I moved to Sammamish because I liked the trees. I liked the environment, right? And I'm thinking, I'm imagining right now, so where this city will be? Are we going to be more like Seattle, or we are still Sammamish? Right? For example, even if using Seattle as example, from 2014 to 2016, probably that's the fastest population growth in Seattle. But City Seattle, as a metropolitan area, has a population of 650K. And the growth of the annual population growth in that largest growth is only 15K, 15,000 people. So that's 2.5% of the population. But in Sammamish, we only have 60,000 residents. You know, if we already have like 46 or 5,000 units out there, that's more than 15,000 residents growth, and that's 25% of the current population growth in the next, you know, whatever decade, right? So we are projecting such a fast growth, but the city doesn't have the infrastructure. You know, so small city like in South Seattle, like Tacquehues, Des Moines, they even have the public infrastructure in place on the main street, right? They have the water pipe, they have the sewer pipe already in place. Because if you have those, right, landowners, even if have one acre, two acre, 10 acre, right, you could easily sell that property, either to developers or to residents who want to build maybe a bigger house, right? And that diversity of different buildings, right, we have high-end, mid-end, you know, multifamily homes, that really add to the flavor of the city. And it can also give the developer more consideration and more leeway to leave some buffer, leave some trees for everyone. So I kind of feel like I don't understand, as a resident, I don't understand why that we couldn't, you know, work with the Sammamish water and sewer, which they are also a public entity, to try to build these infrastructures first in planning, right? For example, a lift station that can support 80 to 100 homes right now only costs about half a million, half a million dollars. But if, for example, a city make the money, I'm not saying I'm against it, but, you know, I know that the budget for a city building a gym, the whatever, the aquarium, that costs about $27 million, right? So if, for example, half a million dollar can just build a lift station supporting 80 to 100 homes, right, 100 properties, you know, just if the city every year can save a little bit of money to build that infrastructure first, right? Not only you protect the current resident, they have the choices to move to public sewer. Also, when the developer comes in, they could save some money to build houses which fit into the environment better, and also easier for the resident on the street, right, just to sell their property, because their property can be easily connected to the public water and sewer. So I feel that if we constantly argue that, oh, only developer can build the public infrastructure for us, then the resident really doesn't have much say in terms of deciding how the city will grow. And at the same time, it make it really difficult for many, many landowners to sell their properties, because most of us are still on septic. And then it's really strange that a developer, each piece of parcel, one developer build, they build their own designs. So you've got all these various kinds of designs for public sewer and water, and sometimes they tear down the street once, twice, three times, you know, in order to put different design pieces together. So I kind of feel that maybe this is a little bit off the subject for tonight, but I think it's a public hearing for comprehensive plan. I would really love to see that if, you know, the commissioner and the city staff can pass back some of the feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm now going to close the public hearing. And like how before, I had said that we would not ask questions afterward, I do have more questions, so, and guessing maybe some of the commissioners do too. The first question I have, and I was hoping that maybe we could hear from the director, if that's possible. The question is, I'd like to know about the history, and this is for proposal number 11. It's the county property. I'd like to know the history of, was it actually R4? How long was it R4? When did it change to R1? Is it true that no notices were sent out? Things like that, things of that nature.
Want me to answer?
No, I want the director to answer.
So I'll give you a short response to that question, and you may want to probe others for more information on that. But actually, just while the public hearing was going on, I did go back and double-check. We have a copy of the 1983, I believe it is, East Sammamish Community Plan Land Use and Zoning Map. And so those maps that we did receive from King County here recently do confirm that the properties, actually both for item 11 as well as item 8, both were zoned at an R1 density in that particular year. So... So if the zoning was something else prior to that year, that's not something that we've been able to affirm through information, but...
And is that the year that the city annexed it? Or no, that couldn't have been?
No, so the city incorporated in 1999. And so zoning map in, we also have a zoning map from King County. It's dated July 1998, and the same R1 zoning for both groups of these properties. Items 8 and 11 were R1 in 1998 as well. So the item 11, though, was not brought into the city in 1999. It was incorporated, or it was annexed, excuse me, at a later date into the city, so...
Okay. So as far back as anyone can confirm, or at least back to 1983, it's been zoned R1.
We actually have documents that show in 1984 and 1982, those areas were zoned R1.
We have a copy of the East Sammamish Community Plan, both land use map and zoning map. That's correct. And we received those documents from King County.
That's very helpful.
We got them from King County.
We have past those from 1984.
Chair, I'm just conveying the information that we have on file.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. My next question has to do with the EIR, and this has to do with, I mean, maybe Doug can answer this. I don't know if you have to stay up, but you can stay up if you want to.
Sure.
Okay. It's about the EIR for the town center and the TCE zone pieces, and sort of that history from the letter from Scott Hamilton. I just kind of want to hear your perspective on, is that why the TCE was created, to allow them to live on their property until they were ready to leave? Does the EIR reflect that?
Yeah. So that's a really good question. Doug may want to chime in here. You know, what we found is we've got some alternatives that were identified for the town center prior to the EIS work occurring. Obviously, Doug and I and all the other planners were not here during that town center process. So in terms of specific conversations that ensued between the city administration and staff and individual property owners at that time, I can't speak to those firsthand, nor can Doug. However, what we do know is as part of the initial formulation of some options for a town center subarea plan, there were some alternatives that were derived, and those alternatives were studied as part of the EIS. So the EIS identified a preferred alternative, and then that was used as the foundation for actually completing the town area subarea plan. So what we have, if you kind of think linear here for a second, in the early 2000s, there were the alternatives that were worked up. Those were studied under the EIS, and then the EIS preferred alternative that was identified was used as the foundation for the plan. So boom, 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 right? So that's what we have today, that that plan has not been modified since its adoption. So in terms of back in the alternative stage and as it was going through the EIS, again, specific conversations that ensued were between the folks on staff at that time, and of course, property owners at that time as well. So Doug may want to go into a little bit more detail, I don't know if you do, on some of the EIS. I'll leave that to you to follow up.
Sure. The only point I would add is that a version of a zoning map was presented as part of one of the public comment, and I think that that is an accurate figure that was in the final EIS. I think the preferred alternative was always for 2,000 units and 600,000 square feet of commercial space. So there were other zoning changes that happened on the map that you saw to get us to the zoning map that was adopted today. So it wasn't just the E-zone, it was also A5, it was some of the other subzones, it was some of the B zones as well. But ultimately, the preferred alternative always was about the box containing 2,000 dwelling units and 600,000 square feet of commercial space. So that's...
That's total for town center.
For town center, for the town center EIS, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Doug.
I have some questions, first off. When we were talking earlier about under the GMA, we're required to produce, like, what is it, 4,600-some units under the GMA? What's the time factor on that? Is that 4,600 units, a what? Is that a year? Is that through the, I mean, you know, what does that mean?
Sure, yeah. And this is a point that is always relatively complex to explain, in the sense that it is a 20-year growth target. So David Goodman did a good job of explaining kind of how that's derived, and it starts at the state, with the State Office of Financial Management, and they develop population projections in a high, mid, and low range, and they do that based on birth rates, death rates, immigration, et cetera. And then those population forecasts are handed down to each county throughout the state. And what the county does with that is they use their countywide planning policies, which is the regional document that we all plan under with King County, so this regional coordination happens. And the countywide planning policies spell out a process for the local jurisdictions to collaborate, including King County, to develop growth targets. And the key about the growth target is that it takes the population projection that comes down in persons and converts it to dwelling units based on average household size. And David also had pointed out that there are different, essentially a hierarchy of cities in King County, as we all know. Some are larger, and therefore they take larger shares of the growth. And Sammamish is effectively the third rung on a four-rung ladder, and we're considered, I think the term is larger city, metropolitan city, core city, larger city, and smaller city are the four hierarchy components. And so we're the third tier of that, and so we take a much smaller target. So that is a baseline that we need to demonstrate to be compliant with the Growth Management Act, that we have the zone capacity to accommodate at least that growth target. So the Growth Management Act does specify that if a city cannot demonstrate that it meets that target, then it forces essentially policy discussions, and at that point, you would be talking about upzones and other ways to meet that growth target. But that is a baseline over a 20-year period.
Sorry, Doug, to talk over you, but, so we're committed as a city to building over 4,600 units over a 20-year period? Is that, am I...
To have the capacity for...
To have the capacity to that over a 20-year period.
So we build that framework, and then...
Gotcha, okay. Okay. I just wanted to understand the context of the number and what that means. Okay.
I would just add, whether we actually, whether the city actually built, whether that amount of units actually gets built is completely dependent on the market.
Right.
The city just has to show...
But we have to produce the capacity to do that.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. All right.
I have a question about the Pacheta property.
Hang on one second, Jane. I think Jeff wants to add something.
Oh, actually, I'd like to correct something I said a few minutes ago, so sorry for mixing and matching the conversation here. I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, I may have said the 1983 East Sammamish Community Plan a few minutes ago. It's the 1993.
1993.
The information was still the same, the R1, but the year was, I got my years mixed up, so...
Okay.
So we have a 1993 East Sammamish Community Plan zoning map, as well as a 1998 zoning map as well, both of which we got from King County, and it shows R1 for both of these groups of properties, items 8 and 11, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that was corrected on the record.
Thank you.
And if I could just, sorry, Jane, I just had a follow-on for that. So that was the first part of the question I wanted to ask. And then the second part, I was looking at proposal number seven, Don Jared's proposal about the increase in stories. So can you tell me a little bit more about that and what the, you know, the effects of that? Does that mean, are we, is that another way of saying we want to continue to build up instead of building out? Are we trying to, you know, if putting this on the docket and it being on the docket and seeing it all the way through, are we looking at skyscrapers in Sammamish? Is that what we're looking at? Just if you could give me some kind of context for that?
Sure. Good question. So, and also, just to address one of the public commenters as well. So the town center plan, which is a component of the comprehensive plan, has a table in it that lists story limits for each zone. What it doesn't have is a height limit, but the height limit is in the municipal code, actually. It's a height limit, I think, of 70 feet. So essentially, if all you did was amend the comprehensive plan to get rid of that height limit, you would still have a 70-feet height limit, or, excuse me. If all you did was amend the comprehensive plan to get rid of that story limit, you would still have a height limit from the code of 70 feet. So essentially, in order to get, in order to build higher than 70 feet, you would have to have an additional policy discussion related to the municipal code. But that all being said, I believe that the justification offered in the application, and again, this wasn't a staff-initiated application, was that doing so would intensify the density, make it more walkable, and also provide, and a kind of side benefit would be to have more open space available, because more of the density would be in single buildings rather than spread out.
Commissioner Garrison, you had some questions?
I have a question, but I'm starting to look at the time, and I'm worried about how we're going to go through this process. I have comments on each one of these, and if we need to make a motion to talk about them, we're kind of just talking about them, and I...
Let's do that, Jane. Do you want to just go ahead and do that now? Make the motion, and then we can, you can...
Do we make the motion for number one and go through in order?
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll, you guys do have the main motion? On the, a slide for main motion?
Just got to open it back.
So what we'll do, the main motion will be staff's recommendation, and then it will be our job...
It's also on the bottom of your order of events sheet.
Ah, thanks. We can make that motion, that motion is the staff's recommendation, and what we would do is if we desire to amend it, then we would amend that motion, so...
I move to recommend to the city council that proposals 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 be placed on the 2018 docket and advance to legislative review.
I second that motion.
There is a motion on the table and a second, and now we can go ahead and deliberate. Jane, why don't you start us off on, do you want to go, do you want to start with number one?
I want to start with number one.
Okay, let's do it.
I feel like I have to say yes to this, but I'm not doing it very willingly. I don't like this as a CB zone, because it's too small. I think the site is jammed into the corners, so you can't make left turns in or out of the property from the main arterials. It needs to incorporate the land to the west, in the way I look at it, and it needs to be more generous. It needs to have a good front face. This is a very important intersection. The site on the northeast corner has a beautiful front face. How are we going to get this out of a little square that looks like a building pad in a shopping center? It's never going to happen, so I'm not happy about sending this one on. I think that it forces a car use on the site and not a pedestrian one. It forces another cellular development that has to be buffered from the surrounding uses. And I'm not pleased with it. So I feel, though, that I'm forced, because it's, we don't have any way to control that, I'm forced to say yes with number one.
I kind of feel the same way. I wish there was a civic designation, because when we were going through the uses, you see that there could be a hotel there, and I feel like that's a little bit alarming. That's one of the things that worry you, but especially right behind those houses. So, you know, it's like the city owns it. That seems like, you know, there's a community center on it. You would think that it would stay there forever, but it may not, so, like Jane, I'm leaning towards, you know, moving it on. But yeah, I wish there was a different, I wish there was a different zone we could use.
Yes, I would agree with you. I agree with you about that. I mean, I've been in and out of that site personally myself over the years, when it was the library, and was always just a horrible spot to get in and out of, always has been. That being said, I see the logic in the city wanting to kind of change the zoning to match where it's already on this sort of a crossroads area, and to maybe kind of, if you will, kind of protect it. But I think it is a shame we don't have some kind of a civic building zoning, you know, so that it would kind of...
Stay that way.
Right. It wouldn't run the risk of it becoming a hotel in 20 years' time, or whatever, who knows, right? So I think that's maybe something we should be talking about down the road, but yeah, I mean, I would support this, yeah, moving forward, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're all in agreement on number one. Larry, do you have anything to add? Okay. So head to number two. And this is with the pro plan. I don't have anything to add with this.
I would support this, too.
Completely supported?
I completely support 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
2, 3, 4...
Agreed.
5 and 6. Yes, I agree with all those. Okay, so let's move to seven.
I have to say, I would agree with this one.
To support it?
To support it, yeah. I mean, I think it's...
You mean move it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would. I feel this is, when I look at what Bellevue are facing right now, and they just increased the limits on how tall a building can be in downtown Bellevue area, and not that I see necessarily that as us, but it's down the road, you know, decades later, this is, these are decisions, you know, you have to make. And I do think the point about building up instead of building out and leaving more green spaces, which I think is completely consistent with a lot of the values we have as a city. So I would support this going forward.
I don't even think it's about that. I think it's, it seems just so minor. It seems like it should be a point on our errata sheet that we don't have yet, or call it the list. Put it on a list, and when the timing's right, update it. I can't imagine why we can't say feet instead of stories.
Yeah. I feel the same way. It doesn't, I don't feel like it makes sense to legislate based on the number of stories. I mean, maybe you want eight-foot ceilings, I don't know, for some reason.
I just want to clarify that by, all this amendment does is eliminate a limit of stories. It does not change the height limit that's currently in force, which is 70 feet.
Right.
Exactly. So it's not anything, so let's just go for it.
I would support adding it to the docket. So we don't, let's not make an amendment now. Let's just make, well, should we make an amendment now and then keep track of them? Is that how you want to do it?
So I think there's a couple of options here. I think, I guess the answer is that it depends if you would like to amend the main motion to add certain recommendations to the ultimate...
I think that's how we're going to do it.
Okay. Then that, sure, yeah.
So let's, someone...
So you would make an amendment to the main motion, there would be a second deliberation, and then a vote, and then it would go back to the main motion.
Okay, let's do that. Does someone want to make a motion to add number seven to the docket?
I'll make that motion to add number seven to the docket.
Okay, so there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to amend the main motion to add proposal number seven to the 2018 docket. It's 2018, right?
Yes.
I have this document, and I'm seeing it says 2017.
It's 18.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, so deliberation on the motion and the second?
The only thing, it keeps coming back to me about height in stories. It seems like if we send it forward, it gives the council, city council, something else to do, or I don't want to say have to do. If we don't send it forward... If we don't send it forward, then it could be brought up through a code amendment to increase the height. So is the city council, if they adopt this, or they discuss it and adopt it, they really haven't solved anything. So I guess I'm, I think I hear from staff and some other people that it should be a height that we're dealing with, and that's a code amendment.
And it is, it is the height, so the code says that we can't build above 70 feet, so I agree with Commissioner Garrison, I'm thinking, why not eliminate the stories? It seems like a text amendment to me, because, like I said, what if you want to build, I mean, no one would build eight foot, but what if you want to build an eight-foot story instead of a 10-foot story, or maybe you have a basement, and, and just, why would you want to regulate that as long as they don't hit, as long as they don't go above 70 feet? What's, I don't, I don't see what the issue would be. Anything to add? Okay. All those in favor of approving the amendment to the main motion to add number 7 to the 2018 docket, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. So the amendment is approved 3 to, 3 to 1. Okay, so now we'll go to number 8. For me, I think that this needs to stay R1, and the reason is because it's completely surrounded by R1 properties. The reason I brought up that comment about those houses looking like they're R4s, I just wanted to clarify and make sure that that really is R1. But now I understand that parcel is big, and so those houses were clustered, so it just looks differently, but it is surrounded by R1, and I would hate to change the character of that neighborhood, and it would dramatically change the character of that neighborhood if you changed those three parcels and then left the rest of it R1. So that's how I feel about that one.
I would like to ask if, there's, there must be 30 units or so, I didn't count them, in that parcel to the north of the Betchestap piece. If that's true, then there must be 30, nearly 30 acres of open space preserved around that. Is there?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not sure when that was platted and when that was developed, however, it is, it is R1, and there are clustering provisions in R1, so I can only speak to that generally.
When you go out and look, you can't see where that, why that would be R1, and I just wonder if that, if that's true. I find with this property, it's, it is kind of a problem, because it's, it doesn't have any environmental strikes against it. I checked all Mary Victor's maps.
The city's map.
I went through everything I could find, and I could not find anything like that. I think it's beautiful property. I wish mine drained like that, I wish I had topsoil like that. So it does, it does, I understand why people want to save it, but it doesn't seem fair to the owners when I look at the properties around it. And so I have to kind of, I wonder if it's a really fair thing to do to these two people. And I'm, I'm not sure that that is really R1 to the north, I kind of doubt it. I don't think it is built out as R1. It might be zoned as R1.
Yeah.
I would support it going forward, as I just feel, listening to the property owners and what they have done for the community with the park next to it, excuse me if you can hear me, I just feel that they deserve this proposal to be heard further by the city council. So I would support it going forward.
Okay. I would agree, and maybe at that time, you know, once an actual legislative review takes place, they can verify that, the R1 piece.
Right.
I mean, it just needs a little bit more analysis and research.
Mm-hmm.
Larry? Okay. Well, let's make a motion to amend the main motion.
I'll make a motion to amend putting proposal number 8 as part of the motion.
On the 2018 docket?
Correct, yes. Thank you, Jane.
Second.
Okay, so we're doing this a little bit backwards, because then, now we're starting to deliberate, so maybe we'll try to do it the right way the next time. It's not your fault at all, it's mine. Okay, so we've sort of already deliberated, but is there anything else to add? Okay, so there's a motion and a second to add proposal number 8 to the 2018 docket. All those in favor of approving the amendment to the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so the amendment passes 3 to 1. All right. So, let's do it this way. Let's, if this, if number 9 is one that we want to amend, does someone want to make that motion?
I have a comment on it, so, since we're under the main motion, I can make my comment under the main motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I live near this place, and I thought, oh, good, they're, they're going to build a coffee shop, and I get to have coffee and donuts, and I can walk to it. How wonderful. And then I started thinking about what NB means, and I think it was explained tonight that you can put so many things in an NB zone that I wouldn't want there, that I don't think it's the right zone, but I think it's the right attitude. And I wish we had one of these things in every neighborhood. It makes me sad that if, if it could be owner-occupied, if it didn't have a lot of parking, if it could be a gathering place for people, it would be wonderful, but we don't have the right classification. It's kind of like number 1, where we don't have enough different classifications to support what we really like to do, to do in Sumamish. So I feel it has to be a no, but I, I'm, it might be really cool.
I definitely agree with that. I always wish there was a coffee shop in my neighborhood. You have to drive 20 minutes. Okay, so I think, is there any, is, are there any comments based on 9? All right, so now we get to number 10, and does anyone want to make a motion to amend the main motion to include number 10?
I move that we include number 10 on the 2018 docket.
I second.
There is a motion and a second to add proposal number 10 to the 2018 docket, so let's go ahead and deliberate.
I just feel that this is the right thing to do. I found your photographs shocking to me, and I just can't imagine, your, your description of living in a fishbowl, it must be exactly correct. So I just feel like this is only the right thing to do. And so, yes, I really feel this needs to move forward.
I agree with that, and I think that it would be more shocking to have one single-family residence just sitting there.
Right.
Right in between the church. I could see if, if the church property was open space, or even if the church property was another R1, that, and those people would be impacted, you know, then maybe we'd have to worry about this, but it's like you have the church property, then you have this property, then you have town center, I, it doesn't see, it wouldn't seem to fit the character at all.
It's a bit like the Little House from Up.
Yeah. Right.
So I just feel like we don't need to tie balloons to your house so that you can...
Though I wish, I know you wish you could.
Yes, there you go. Had you thought about that?
So, I, so I do think it deserves for the review during the legislative, legislative process, and it would be nice if it was possible, well, I don't think, you can't do it this way, but I do wish there were more TCEs to include with the proposal, but, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Excuse me, I'd like to interrupt and just let the commission know that they would need to extend the meeting if you want to keep going.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to, I'll just go to 9 o'clock, even though I don't think we're going to go that far.
I second.
All those in favor of extending the meeting to 9 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so we will extend the meeting to 9 o'clock. Okay, so I think I've said what I wanted to say on that one.
On, I guess, on number 10, here it's a year later, and there's a lot of things in our minds, in my mind especially, I am not able to speak for the city council, the present city one, the future one, nor the past ones. What I am starting to pick up, whether these go forward or not, the city, and I came up with a term here, needs to look at functional growth management, and that will require a very comprehensive vision statement and sense of place. In the city right now, the council and staff are working on traffic, and we heard about infrastructure. All these fit together, but that vision, that, that plan, and that's why I wish there was another way to put these aside and get them done individually, because they each have merit, even the ones that we didn't vote for. I'm not so much for a coffee house, but there's other things we could, you know, have. Oh, yeah. I wanted a tea house, I'm trying to be...
Zen.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I see. I can't say I worry, but I personally don't want to burden the council with something that they don't really have a map to accomplish what we're sending forward, so that's all.
Jane, did you have comments?
I think we should let the council figure that out.
Yeah, I agree. Maybe the more burden, maybe might initiate some changes.
This is our opinion.
Did you want to speak, did you want to say anything about the TCE, about number 10? Anything specific?
I'm appalled at the pictures, and I think we owe it to them to do, to pass it right away.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to amend the main motion to include number 10 on the 2018 docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
No. And so that passes 3 to 1. Okay, and the last one, number 11. Let's go ahead and start with a motion, because I, I'm just getting, we need to do that, so. Jane, you can do the motion if you want.
I, I'm going to speak within the main motion.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I think something has changed on this property, and it's not the property itself, it's our attitude about it. When we, we just went through a process with Inglewood and Tamarack that was excruciating, and we had to come up with a solution that was a compromise, a compromise that I didn't like. And it allowed 500-square-foot impervious on a 5,000-square-foot lot in hazardous landslide areas, hazardous erosion areas, and it was on a steep slope, but we had to do it because the, the place was platted back in the 1800s, back when they didn't have environmental problems, back when they didn't have open space problems. We have that now, and we really are aware of it. I, I feel bad for the people that are stuck in this, but I cannot go ahead and suggest that we should do it, because I think that all of the properties that are on the slopes leading up to the plateau should not be upzoned. And I think they ought to be, this particular property is in a hazardous area, that it's a, it's got an overlay, I looked at the maps, and it's got an overlay of hazardous erosion control, hazardous, what is the name of the?
Is it no disturbance zone?
No, it's a hazardous, I got to get my glasses, I've got it written down here.
I think the term is erosion hazard area.
Erosion hazard.
Yeah, it's an erosion hazard area. There is some steep slope that is on the lower part of it, but for that reason and for its location, going down to the plateau, I don't want to create that situation again on that side of the plateau that we just had to deal with over at Tamarack and, and Inglewood. I, I don't want to repeat, so I just can't bring myself to go for it.
I agree with that, and thank you for looking at the maps, because I didn't, and that's really important information. I think the, the property's always been R1, it looks like it's R, I mean, the maps say that it's been R1. Just, just one minute, just, just hang on a minute, please. Okay. I have to go by what the maps say. I have to. Well, then bring them. What are we supposed to do? Let me say something else. I will tell you what has changed. Council said no to this last year, and since then, we have a moratorium on development. Nobody in the city wants to see any properties or any trees cut down, they don't want to see development. That is what has changed. A lot has changed, and yes, we passed it through last year, there was a little bit different strategy. Last year, we said, let's put all of them through so that we can review all of them. Well, council didn't even want to review them, and so they didn't. And so here we are, and we're looking at this same proposal over again, and it seems very confrontational, and I, I feel bad for that. I, I understand that you want to sell the property, I don't, I just, I don't know how to solve the problem, but I have to agree with Jane on the environmental issues. It's always been R1. The community at this point does not support upzoning in that area, and so that's what I'll have to say about it. I'm going to let the other two speak, and we'll kind of go from there.
My only, my opinion, I, I agree with what you said, and not having been here last year when, when we went through this, I, and maybe that's why I have this opinion, but my, my opinion is that I, I feel for the property owners. I've, I feel like I would like, I've, I, I feel that they deserve another hearing with the council, so I would be in favor of this going forward.
So they will get another chance, because I think, like David said, even if we don't move it forward today, they can still come back to city council, and city council can decide at that point.
Sure, and, and I know that, but I just wanted to state that for the record, that that was my opinion, so, yeah.
Larry?
Yes, we're trying to make a deliberation here, and what, no matter how the city council sees this, whether this... And what, no matter how the city council sees this, whether this goes forward or not from this group, we probably will have minority statements or not in, in what we're sending forward. I really appreciate when a group of homeowners can come together and unify and jointly present what they want. And if the city council is going to hear this group, I think that's, that speaks a little bit for itself. Here's a group of people trying to solve a problem. I have to agree, and I would vote not to put it forward, but I would still say to continue the proposal with, with the council.
Okay. With your guys' commission, permission, would it be okay for Mr. Stark to come up and speak? Okay. Why don't you come up?
I don't want this to be confrontational, but Jeff was nice enough here to, and I don't think anybody heard because it was a lot of things going on. Excuse me. Can you please speak into the microphone?
It's just because on the video, it won't pick up the audio if you're not speaking in there.
I said this is not confrontational, so don't worry. Jeff came up and corrected himself. He went from 1983 to 1993, or 2003. 1983, I want you to make sure if nothing, you don't take anything else away, we were R4 zoned. We were R4 when we purchased the, pardon?
SR.
SR4.
Oh, okay.
The zoning was different than, actually, I believe it reads four to six per acre back then in that zoning. We're not going to that, but we are, unlike the one that was surrounded by R1s, we're surrounded by R4s. R4s to the south, R4s to the west. We're, we're completely, we're like a little island, which I guess is not a good thing to have in a community. So we're just, like I said, we're asking for, to get our original zoning back. It, I want you, I would like the record corrected that they were R4 in 1983 or 84, because a bunch of us, it was R4 when we purchased the property, of the tax records to prove it.
Basically, the record is just what you're speaking, what you're stating right now, since we don't have any documents to show that at this point. But thank you, Mr. Stark.
Okay, that's all I can say. And I'm shocked because when they did the other studies, I don't believe we were in any kind of a zone for, for any erosion.
We had a feasibility study.
We had the feasibility study. None of that stuff, I, I thought you were talking about another piece of property.
So here we go. You guys, let's, I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a motion to add proposal number 11 to the 2018 comprehensive plan docket. Or to amend the main motion to add number 11. It seems like it needs more research, it needs more analysis. Like Larry said, it is amazing that you did this, not only this year, you came together, you came together last year. It is a true testament to your neighborhood character, so.
A second.
I got a second. So is there any more deliberation? It also sounds like we need to figure out, you know, some of the environmental issues on the property, so.
I might suggest that with our net density calculate, way of calculating, you might look at what, if that is a large hazardous area, you might look at what you're really going to get out of it at for, R4.
That's true. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so it's a tie, which means that it, it will not move forward because it doesn't have majority tonight. But that doesn't mean that it won't be heard by council. Council will hear it. So I'm sorry, but you will have to come back for council.
I don't want to be off the page.
I, I'm sorry, can't, I'm sorry. Jolie, you know that, that we can't talk like this. I'm sorry. We can't, we're not supposed to talk like this. I'm, I'm sorry. We can talk after the meeting. There's been a vote, we decided, that's all.
But we now need to look at the main motion.
Yes, that's right. Okay, but let's hear from the director.
Just quickly, I wanted to just offer to the commission, in regards to item one, now that you've had a chance to go through each item, particularly the last five or six, and deliberate those a little bit more thoroughly, I just wanted to make sure before you vote on the main motion, that you didn't want to cycle back. There seemed to be a fair amount of angst about item one.
A little bit, yeah.
And it was the first one, so.
Is there a civic zone?
If you wanted to re-discuss that.
So there's no civic zone that we could use?
Staff was correct.
Okay.
In, in that statement tonight, that's correct.
Okay.
So I just wanted to just do that before you voted on the main motion, if you wanted to revisit it, so.
Okay. Are you guys good with number one? I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Okay.
And I call for the question, the main motion.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second to the main motion. And staff is going to have to help me because I wasn't writing them down. So please give me the numbers of the proposals.
Proposals seven, eight, and 10 were agreed on to add to the main motion.
Seven, eight, and 10?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second. Let me, let me think about this. Sorry. There's a main motion that has been amended to include proposals number seven, eight, and 10 on the 2018 docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, and that motion passes three, one. And that concludes this item. So the next item of business is adjournment. And if there is no other business tonight, I'd like to adjourn. Is there any other business?
No.
Okay. I will adjourn the meeting at.
Sorry.
8:46.
Thank you.